Can you hear me?
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our facilities meeting for October 20. It's not October 23rd. I'm reading the wrong part for October. Gosh, it's been a day. October 9th, Dr. Beck Pooley is on Zoom and can't be here, so I'm going to run through the meeting for her. We will begin with courtesy of the floor. Anybody wishing to speak on agenda items only? Seeing none, we'll move right into discussion items. The first 2.01 is the architect selection process for Fountain Hill. We have some exciting things to discuss tonight, Mr. Stein.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Excuse me. So we, we just completed a pretty thorough process of finding and recommending a, an architect for the Fountain Hill Elementary School project. We, we started back in the summer, if you recall, where we put out an RFP to seven local quasi-local school construction firms, architects, and we held a site visit out at Fountain Hill on August 15th, and we received proposals on September 22nd. Throughout that process, we provided information about our, our potential project in terms of room schedule, sizes, draft concept plan that outlined kind of our own verification that it can be done for plan-wise educational specifications, how we plan to use the building into the future, a contract with all the terms and conditions of our, of our partnership, and a construction budget. So everything we knew about the project was provided, and the, we received six proposals of the seven that were invited, and a team of board members, administration, and from the reef's team reviewed those proposals. We shortlisted those six down to three finalists with whom we conducted interviews. And we reviewed the organizational staffing qualifications of each of the firms, their understanding of our program, given all that documentation that we provided through the RFP, with their design approach, how they're going to tackle this project, their controls, their references of similar-sized projects, confirming that they would fit within our, our scheduled timelines for the project, and their concept solution for a theoretical future Fountain Hill Elementary School, plus the fee. So factoring all those together, it's actually a very difficult decision, but looking at some very high-quality presentations and effort put in by local firms, and the committee is recommending naming and moving ahead with Alloy 5 Bethlehem to be our architect for the Fountain Hill project.
All right. I can echo, and Mr. Lozey and Dr. Beck Pooley were there as well for the board. We had three really incredible proposals that we looked at. We had great presentations from all three of the firms, and it really was a tough decision in the end. It seemed like maybe we quickly come to consensus, but that was not the case. It was really, it was a really difficult decision. I can only speak for myself on that. No matter which one of the three we went with, we've been very well-served and have a really unique school. Something that was important to me was that we had a building that wasn't obnoxious in a very established Fountain Hill neighborhood, not something that towered over the community. And all three gave us a really nice design that fits in well with the neighborhood, and it'll really be a, a sense of pride, I think, for the school district, and for the students, and for the borough of Fountain Hill. So I'm really excited, really excited with the Alloy 5 proposal and what they can do for us. Mr. Lizzy, I don't know if you want to share anything as well?
But echoing a lot of what you said, Mr. Fasenato, and then I, I would add, I think, something that all three brought to the table, but that ultimately led us to, to stick with or to go with Alloy 5, is that all three firms understand the valley, understand the commitment to education that Bethlehem has, and so built out plans that really saw the needs of what our kids needed and, and what our community is looking for. So again, just great proposals, but we're, we're hoping that Alloy 5 will, will meet and exceed the expectations, as we know that they can.
Yep. And thank you to Mark, and especially to Arif and the team at Dewey, who really, they know when they're coming in, what they're up against with Arif's team, that it's going to be really scrutinized. So thank you for getting us three of the best proposals out there and making a tough decision. So we appreciate all the effort behind the scenes on that. All right. Anything? Comments? Questions? Everybody comfortable? Dr. Shively?
After, it's a fair question. It won't be long. After the contracts rewarded by the board at the voting meeting, they'll have a little bit of a touch-up of their original proposal, and then it won't be long after that that we'll have a schematic design to show the board.
Well, I, I think we could share just some, you know, photo or two of, that they, that they gave us of the outside without going into too much detail, because a lot of it will change and can change. This was their first attempt at what we wanted, and then obviously through the next couple of months and years, things will change. Things will either get scaled down or changed or switched around. But I think we can at least share the first-shot pictures, if that makes sense.
And if I could just, oh, go ahead.
No, the only thing I was going to say is it's, we're going to use our typical process, come to the facilities committee at strategic milestones for your blessing on various stages of the project. So you will get involved, even though the integration team will be more heavily involved. We'll certainly come back to facilities, and then if you want also at a board, there'll also be some presentations at the public, you know, at the school. So we'll be going through that. There'll be a public Act 34 hearing is required for a new school. So you will get plenty of chances to see it and provide feedback. But I think, as Mr. Fasenato said, I think it's best that we organize our game plan before we start to put something out that might change quite a lot. So I think we're better off kind of organizing it and getting it ready for, for your final review. The board will have a final say at all of these milestones, so that we proceed beyond schematic design, as Dr. Silva said. Okay?
Other questions? Comments? Dr. Donner?
Just to echo the thanks to the committee and to the board members that were involved in that. I know due diligence was served and happy with the selection.
Who else? All right. So you will see that on the agenda for October 23rd. That's item 4.01. The Architectural Design Services and the Recommendation of Alloy 5. Item, I'm sorry. We don't have any informational items, Mr. Stein. All right. Then we'll keep going through the agenda items. Item 4.02 is to replace the sound system in the Liberty High School auditorium. You see a proposal there. Dr. White is excited, and we have the event staging there as the low bidder, lowest responsible bidder on that. Everybody good with that one? Timeline on that, Mr. Stein?
That will be completed probably in the coming months.
Okay.
We'll be. We are well aware of the performance schedule at Liberty, and I don't know if we'll get the first one. We're going to try, but we'll most certainly have, be ready for the spring productions for sure.
Prior to the conclusion of the 2324 school year, to be safe. All right. 4.03 is the agreement with Dewey Engineering that you see attached there. Anything to add on that?
This is just that we, we approved the, a new retainer agreement with Dewey Engineering last year. But again, full bar, following our compliance updates with the business office, just making sure there are a number of services that Arif's team provides that are kind of in disparate locations. So this is just bringing them all into one agreement, so it's all documented in one place.
But it's nothing new.
Nothing new. No.
That's what I thought.
I'd like to just, I would just like to thank the board for entering into this retainer. Not many school districts have the surety of advice that we get related to facilities, project management, other, you know, a piece of a stairway falls off the side of a building, we have somebody there right away to be able to do and analyze what's going on. So we're fortunate to have Dewey Engineering as, as our, on retainer, and I strongly support the recommendation.
All right. Thank you, Doc Silva. Everybody good with that? And then the last one, 4.04, we renew every two years. This is emergency evacuation, if needed, for Lehigh Valley Charter High School for the Arts via our school district buses, and they would reimburse us for any expenses for that. So it's just renewal of an ongoing agreement. Everybody good with that? Anything else that I missed before courtesy of the floor? All right. Courtesy of the floor for any items, not just facility items. Mr. Antalics, you good? We're just getting it over with early.
Sit yourself up. Sorry about that. Stephen Antalics, Stephen Ridge. I was great interest, read the comments concerning people running for the school board, and especially discussion on CRT and DEI. In 1952, having lived in Bethlehem all my life, I left Bethlehem to work with DuPont in Louisville, Kentucky. And in Kentucky, I got my first real history lesson. How? I was called in to the office of my technical director, telling me, he was very uneasy with this, and said, Steve, you've got a great future with DuPont. Be careful. I said, what do you mean? He said, I've gotten feedback that you invited your friend to play tennis on the court at your apartment building. The problem was this. My good friend was black. And you didn't do that in Kentucky then. I didn't know this. But here's the interesting thing. My supervisor tells me, not a resident or the landlord or someone in local government, but my, and the reason he brought it up, he says, Steve, you've got a good future. If this gets in the paper, if there's an incident, it gets in the paper, they're not going to say Stephen Antalics, resident, living in so-and-so. They're going to say DuPont chemist. That's going to reflect badly on the company and you, and that could affect your promotions. So what do you do? You don't invite your friend back. Very subtle, very subtle. Also, a few years before that, GIs coming back from Europe, living in Mississippi, couldn't sit at the same, couldn't sit at a counter in a diner, in a diner. Why? Because you're black. But who was a lot to sit there? Nazi prisoners of war who worked on the farms, against whom the GIs fought. But this never came out in the history books. Never. But Mississippi is one of the states, and Pennsylvania is one of the states, and you would think under the federal government, everything would be equal. But it wasn't. But it's very subtle. And how did they get away with it in itself? There was a phrase known as separate but equal. So if the blacks had a tennis court, they couldn't complain. If they had a diner, they could sit, they couldn't complain because they had equal ability, but they weren't equal as a citizen. So why am I saying this? The question CRT is totally out of the question because it's demanded. It's demanded because it'll tell children really what America was like. And to deny CRT is equivalent to the German government saying the Holocaust never existed because it'll make the German children feel guilty. So to those who have a different opinion as to what I've just said, I seriously ask them to simply examine their conscience.
Thank you, Mr. Antalics. Anybody else? Courtesy of the floor? All right. Seeing none. Open forum. Seeing none. Motion to adjourn facilities. Mrs. Patrick. Second, Mr. Lozey. All in favor? All right. We are adjourned. We'll take two minutes, and then Dr. Shively, we can start with curriculum.
Hi, testing again to see if this works. Sorry, just got your text.
All right. We are beginning the curriculum committee meeting today. So first, we have courtesy of the floor on agenda items only. All right. Moving on. Up there. Yeah, just agenda items only is, it's up there. We will have a discussion right afterwards.
On the screen.
Yeah. So discussion item 2.01, investing in the power of families grant challenge application submission.
So we have a few grants that will be, we've either submitted or are about to submit. The first is the investing in the power of families grant challenge application. This is a fairly competitive grant that we're looking forward to submitting a proposal for, and we were notifying the board and asking for your approval. This grant would support our parents as teachers program, which comes out of our equity office. The whole goal of the parent as teachers program is to build parent mentors, increase the capacity of parent educators to have critical conversations in the community. The parent as teachers program provides lesson plans from birth to age five, and then as a child is ready to enter into kindergarten, there's a graduation ceremony for the parents. And it's meant to increase the empowerment and advocacy of parents. And so we're looking forward to applying for this grant.
Questions? All right. Moving on to 2.02, the PHEAA Pennsylvania Helps Grant Application.
Thank you very much. So this is the FIA grant, and the purpose of this grant is if we are awarded, we would be able to work with college students as interns, and they would work with our guidance couns, our counseling office, our guidance counselors, to provide some mental health services. We would be receiving a grant, and from that grant, these interns would receive stipends. Should that college student decide to stay and, and keep working at an LEA within a certain boundary, they would be eligible for additional awards. Again, all of this being grant-funded.
Question, define the, the local education agency. Is that beyond a school environment, or would it apply to other service?
The, we are, Bethel Maria School District is considered the LEA, the local education agency. And so they would be working directly with our guidance counselor services and as we as the applicant for the grant. Thank you.
For the, for the college students providing, or that would be eligible to go through this program, would this be for them, this internship would be them getting credit hours towards a program? And would this be students that it would be like in a graduate program or post-bachelor program? Or these four-year students that are in like a school counseling, some sort of program?
They're in a school counseling program at either, presently, we're planning to work with Kutztown and Lehigh Universities.
And then the follow-up, I would imagine, though, then the oversight of that program, I guess what I'm getting at is that these students would not be necessarily providing counseling and psychological services, but would be assisting people doing that, or would they be running their own groups?
Um, that's a great clarification. This would be coordinated by Tracy Herner, who is right behind me. So I'm going to let her answer more of the day-to-day operational questions.
Of course. So this is, this is not out of the norm, what we normally do. So these are interns that are in the process, we already have in place, at University in Lehigh, hopefully in time to incorporate more of these as well with their new school counseling program. But for this year, this is the first year FIA is providing this opportunity. And so the state is still working out some of the weeds, which is what all this looks like as us with the LEA. So they're, they're functioning in their current intern capacity, which is their 600 which is their 600 hours that they're required to do under the supervision of their selected school counselor supervisor, who's named on the grant as well. So we currently have five applicants that we would apply for. We, that special provision, because if we're five interns, we had, but it said we could pick four, we're going with five, so we got permission to do that. So as this plays out, ideally, as we have school psychologist interns, nurse interns, technical staff, social work interns, they would also qualify for additional classes each of those classes.
So this is kind of like work-study, but not work-study. They're doing a program.
Consider, I would think of it like a paid intern, so we're already interns with school counselors as their intern supervisors to the program requirements. So they'll be doing.
Okay, and so then our counseling staff is like super, I guess, my concern is because I, I think I know this program because I think I remember working with a couple of individuals back in the day at Brockle doing this. And so I, and we had good people that were doing it. My, my question is, and my question leads to a concern is that I want to understand that there, these are oversight of students who are learning, be in the helping field. And so there are parameters in place to make sure that folks, you know, they're not, not helping. Am I making sense?
Yeah. So their, their school counseling interns. Doing internship based work, yes, serving our students.
Okay, so they are post, so they're masters level. Okay, I didn't catch that before. Then all of my other stuff is unnecessary. Thank you.
So just to add on to that, these are, this is the program that's been in existence already. The difference of this grant is that these interns are now being paid. So actually, the problem that this grant is solving is to make sure that we have future social needs. And so it's, it's more about the tuition assistance. So these, this, this internship program's been in place for a couple of years.
No, I've worked with the people. My, my, my question was if we're having folks coming in and doing that work, I just wanted to make sure that these were the masters-level people that were doing that. Yeah.
All right, moving on to 2.03, the Wind Creek Grant for Donegan Elementary.
So this is something you've seen in previous years, that Wind Creek generously grants Donegan Elementary School $80,000 for activities, family events, student trips, and leader in me initiatives, teacher activities, et cetera. And so this would be approval of that grant.
Any questions about that? All right, moving on to information items. Item 3.01, 2425 BASD High School Program of Studies Development Timeline.
I love program of studies. This is like an annual ritual that is always fun. And so on an annual basis, typically in October. You're making fun.
It's exciting.
It is. So on an annual basis in October, we typically share with you our objectives for our program of studies and our timeline. And so as we are preparing the 2425 High School Program of Studies, we have a couple of objectives, some which you might have seen previously because we maintain them as goals because we think they're really important, and some which might be a little new. So believe it or not, if you go back a number of years, Freedom and Liberty High School did not have common program of studies. They vary, the number of credits varied, et cetera. And so we remind both Freedom and Liberty that it's important that a student who lives in one area of town is getting the same experience from another part of town. And so we take pride in maintaining a common program of studies and course catalog for both Freedom and Liberty High School. On an annual basis, we evaluate the courses that we have in our program of studies and try to identify, is there anything that's becoming redundant? Or is there anything that we're feeling is not aligned or no longer, you know, being offered the way it was previously offered due to lack of student interest? And should we be considering those? We continue to want to support the BASD Diversity Equity and Inclusion Goals, Talent Development and Detracking Goals. We believe in supporting our grade level instruction and career pathways goals. Something that is more new this year is making sure that we have policies in place to support our assessment and grading practices. One thing that is new this year is we are eager to add the AP African American Studies. In the past two years, it's been, this course has been piloted. Last year, Bethlehem area school district actually reached out to College Board and said, can we pilot? And unfortunately, at that time, they said they only were doing a limited offering, and we were not, you know, going to be included in the pilot. And that was fine. So we're eager to offer that because that will become eligible for all students starting next school year. And then the next three items are very much aligned to our career pathways work in that we believe that students walking across the stage at graduation should have a better. We need to constantly be thinking about how they are prepared for their future. And some of those things include, you know, experiencing what a college-level work course, college-level coursework might look like. And that would be advanced placement and dual enrollment courses. Because, you know, conceivably, a senior in their second semester versus a freshman in college in their first semester, they're not too far off. And so we believe in that level of exposure. And the second thing that we believe in is more career exploration opportunities. And so trying to increase our job shadow, job shadow and internship opportunities because we believe that students need to experience the environment that they might potentially want to work in. They need to, you know, get a sense for, is this what I like on a day in and day out basis? And so unfortunately, COVID set us back a little bit in those initiatives. And so I think that our, the time is right to reinvigorate them. And so what we have, kind of with a backwards design, is we started developing these strategic initiatives back in September. We met with our assistant principals, our department chairs, and shared this. We met with many of the members of the high school instructional leadership group. And tonight, you'll see that we have listed that we're presenting this timeline to you this evening. On the 11th, all changes for the program of study are due. On the 18th, we have our program of studies day, which is a great ritual in the Bethlehem area school district. And then concluding on November 6th, we will present what those changes are going to look like with a vote on November 20th at the regular board meeting.
Could I make a proposal?
Sure.
I love some of the aspects of freshman and junior seminar. Would there be an opportunity to make the personal finance class mandatory for all students?
That is something we can definitely chat about. As it sits right now, one of the, in what we used to have a sophomore seminar, there was a unit dedicated to personal finance in that particular course, even though the course was not called personal finance. And so next year, we will officially have junior seminar, but I think it's worthy of further exploration. One of the tricky things we deal with when we talk about requiring an additional course is sometimes we're saying, okay, well, what is this going to take the place of? And so sometimes it's taking flexibility out of a VOTAC student schedule or taking flexibility out of another student schedule to take a course that they really are excited about. Because when we're adding a graduation requirement, as it stands right now with math and science, we require seven credits. And so that could be three math and four science, or four math and three science. And so in the, in some instances, that is a student taking Algebra 1A, Algebra 1 Geometry. And so we would then be asking them to add on personal finance, which would be okay. In other instances, some students are coming in, let's say they're, you know, the other end of the spectrum is they're coming in and taking honors geometry, honors algebra II, honors pre-calc, and AP pre-calc. And so by requiring an additional math course in that four, we are potentially precluding students from taking something else. And so I'd be happy to engage in further conversations about that. But sometimes we try to think about how can we embed this in some of the requirements in lieu of adding additional requirements, because we do appreciate the flexibility that exists within our program of studies.
Totally get where you're coming from, because those things do take priority. Having a junior who had sophomore sem last year, I think that personal finance part fell really short. And then having conversations with students who are currently in the personal finance class, I just, those are life lessons. You know, how to balance a checkbook, how to, you know, figure out how much money you're going to have for rent and utilities and things like that. So if there's even an opportunity, when junior seminar comes about, that something like that could really be beefed up, I think that's a huge opportunity that we could give our students.
I think that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two questions. One, just clarification, HSILG, High School Instructional Leadership Group?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Secondly, well, I've been staring at it for five minutes, trying to figure it out. I couldn't say I didn't embarrass myself. Secondly, AP African American Studies has gotten a lot of media coverage recently, or variations of it. Can you just explain what a course like that covers, what it looks like, 10,000-foot level? I don't need lessons or anything, but what are the topics? What are we talking about?
Yeah, absolutely. So I brought with me the course at a glance because I anticipated that question. So Unit 1 covers the origins of the African diaspora. I'll back up. As you look at the four units that are comprised in AP African American Studies, it starts in early history and takes you to more modern history, as do most history courses. It starts off with the origins of the African diaspora. It then moves into freedom, enslavement, and resistance. The third unit is the practice of freedom, and the fourth unit is movements and debates. And so within each unit, there are, you know, in that beginning, we have the top conversations of introduction to what is African American Studies? The strength and complexity of early African societies, early West African empires, early African kingdoms and city-states, early Africa and global politics. As we move into the second unit and we talk about freedoms, the topics are Atlantic Africans and the transatlantic slave trade. They talk a little bit about from capture to sale, slave labor and American law, culture and community, radical resistance and revolt, resistance strategies, and abolition and the war for freedom. In the third unit, when they talk about the practice of freedom, we have the reconstruction in black politics, the color line, black life in the new year, racial uplift, the new Negro renaissance, migrants, and black internationalism. And to conclude, in movements and debates, there's the anti-colonial movement and the early black freedom movement, the long civil rights movement, black power and black pride, black women's voices in society and leadership, diversity within black communities, identity, culture, and connection. So to make a connection, this is a course that would be optional for students to take as a social studies course, one of many that they could take. And we, I want to say it was two years ago, came with one of the courses that is required for all eighth and ninth graders, which is US History in eighth grade and US History in ninth grade. And we talked a little bit about the triumph and tragedies of African American history throughout US history. And we talked about how there are certain things that we intentionally embed within that curriculum to make sure that we're providing a wide range of perspectives. Glancing at this course, what I notice is there are a variety of things that we discuss out of, you know, we discussed it in US History, eighth and ninth graders, but it goes into much greater depth in AP African American Studies.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to mention my complete and thorough support for this course. I want to thank Dr. Lee Sin, Dr. Anthez, the Social Studies Department for investigating it, looking, looking through it, and including it on their plan for the program of studies. We, the document that Maureen is mentioning is, was from last year, Triumphs and Tragedies. So we had students who, for the first time, learned about the triumphs of the 54th Massachusetts and the Civil War, the Tuskegee Airmen, and the tragedies of the Tulsa riots and Emmett Till. And they're like, yeah, I want to know this. I want to know these. I want to know what's happening in, in history classes. And when you have students inquiring and wanting to know and being an enthusiastic pursuer of what knowledge looks like, we give them an opportunity in the Bethlehem area school district. So I thoroughly support adding this. I think it'll be a great addition and help round out our advanced placement programming electives for students who have that level of interest. So thank you, Maureen.
Dr. Lee Sin, could you talk a little bit about, I don't necessarily see it in the timeline and may miss it, but I know it's part of the process of, you know, looking through and saying, you know, is this really a course that, you know, we should be teaching at this point? Or do we still have the numbers to justify this program? So could you talk about when going through the, the?
The program of study.
The program of studies, POS, I was about to say point-of-sale system. Glad I didn't say the other POS. But could you just talk about, you know, what, a little bit of, same as Mr. Fashion, just kind of like a overview of what it takes? Like, how does something get in? How does something get out?
With pleasure. So I would say it's a multi-tiered system. And so we start off with our assistant principles for curriculum and instruction, and we start reflecting upon, okay, it's been a year since we started this process. Again, what are some of our goals? What are some of the things we're reflecting upon? And then the next layer is we're taking it to a broader administrative group, that high school instructional leadership group, which has representation from ESAL and Special Education, our high school principals, our other curriculum supervisors. The next layer is we have a department chair meeting where, again, we map out those goals. And then we task all individuals involved in this process with going through the program of study to kind of say, okay, what is there? Again, we are intimately, you know, aware of what courses are, you know, very popular versus not popular. What are we trying to encourage? You know, what is there? Is this, it's year after year, it's not running, and so should we be rethinking this? And so the next layer of that is the department chair submit their recommended changes to the Assistant Principals for Curriculum and Instruction. So we have that one tier of the assistant principals kind of going through things and reflecting. And then we have that departmental group kind of going through things. And then we have that program of studies day, where we meet with every single department, and we're looking at the program of studies as a large group. All those members of the high school instructional leadership group is present in addition to the department chairs. And each department comes through for a short meeting to talk about, you know, what's going on within the courses being offered in their department. And sometimes there's brainstorming, and sometimes we're saying, we agree with the recommendations. And sometimes we're saying, maybe not yet, or, you know, have you considered this? And so we then present to you and present to the public what those recommended changes are. And so the next step is then offering them to students. And students have a voice because they'll vote, they will vote with their course requests. You're welcome.
Anything else? All right, so we are moving on to 3.02, beginning of the year, benchmark results for reading math data.
I'd like to invite Mr. Ramato and Mrs. Harper up to join me to talk a little bit about math and reading and our beginning of your data.
I'm excited about program studies too, just saying. I'm really, really excited about this. I can't wait for POS day.
Oh, there we go. Good evening, everyone. So it seems like we were just here talking about why data, and we were, because that was last month, as we were looking back at last year. As we were doing that, our teachers were busily benchmarking our students for the start of the year.
And so tonight, we're here to talk about where we're starting from for the year. If you want to scroll through. Yep. So we'll start with reading. And this is just a brief reminder of where we are. We still have our symbols. You can go ahead to the next page. For reading, as we know, we talk about Akadance, which is that indicator of risk, and it's our temperature check. As we look at the first slide, this is our kindergarten data. So we've added another column for Beginning of Year. And our kindergarten is coming in about where they've been coming in. So district-wide, we're starting the year at 49%. One thing we are bringing back this year with Mr. Fontanaz, we're going to have a pre-K provider night on November 8th at 6 o'clock at Northeast. So we have a general announcement out and we'll be sending invitations to the pre-K providers that we know of in the area to come and learn more about our kindergarten program and then hear from them what they're doing to try to help those incoming kiddos come in with maybe some higher skills. But that's about where we've been starting and we know, we know what to do to get them to where they need to be. As we look at first grade, we're coming in at 56% benchmark. So we are still looking to see, to strengthen those kindergarten end of year results so they stay over the summer, right? And so we want to see that, but that's okay. We have a focus. And if we go to the next slide, this is our incoming second grade. And I'd like to point out that 16 of 16 elementary schools came back pretty darn close to where first grade left at the end of the year. So that's awesome because we want it to be like riding a bike, that summer break shouldn't matter, right? If you have it, you've got it. So we were really pleased to see that.
Kudos to the first grade.
Yeah, they did. They really worked hard. They did. They really worked very hard last year. And then as we look at our third grade data, again, 11 of 16 schools stayed pretty close from where second grade ended coming in to third. So that's good news that we are holding students at that at or above benchmark level. As we go to fourth grade, we are at 62% benchmark district-wide and 10 of 16 again held pretty, pretty close. So that's really good news. As we look at fifth grade, fifth grade, you can see they were first grade when COVID hit, right? So we know that. But we were just talking, fifth grade, we have were students strategic than intensive, which is a good thing because we're, you know, they're not as low as they were. So it, we know it takes longer to get them back up to benchmark. So we have our eye upon them. And then as we move to grade six through eight, yeah, not as many columns on the chart yet, but we have our sixth grade data. And so we're happy with where our sixth graders are coming in. Remember, last year's sixth grade was that first group that their teachers were trained when they were in kindergarten. So we're starting to see those groups of students move up into middle school. As we look at seventh grade, remember, this is where the, the test shifts. It's a, it's a different measure. And so what we are looking at here is that first gate, the maze. And so that's sort of the indication that they got it on the first try. And so we know where we are there. I will say as we go through the gates, so they take that maze assessment, science, social studies, pros, passage. If they're not proficient on that, they would take the silent reading assessment. And, and
Just a quick question on the measure itself in the gate. Because I, you know, I'm looking, oh, out of 100, out of 100, what? So can you tell me what the rubric measurement score is, please?
Not sure. So
Gate one, I mean, we dropped down to 1645. What does this mean?
Yeah. So remember, it's a different assessment. And so we've gone from these, the elementary version to now seven, eight, which is correlated to the SAT 10, SAT 10 instead of the grade. It's now content, more content literacy. So there's a science, social studies, and pros passage that they have to do. And so what I was just going through is that this is the gate one. So this is like, they did it at first assessment, we wouldn't worry about them, move on. Those kids who don't hit it on the first assessment, first gate, the next assessment we would give them right after is a silent reading assessment. This is percent perfect, right? Percent at or above. Yep, percent at or above.
Thank you. That's
I'm sorry. I was missing. I'm sorry. Percent at or, this is percent at. They don't have above in seven, eight. We just have at. So yes, it's at. And so those who are not proficient on that first one, we would do a gate two to double check, right? Like we go one level down. So we give them a silent reading. And we do have more students that then show proficiency with those two scores combined. We'd like to present this first one because it was like, can you get it on the first, first go around, right? And so as we've talked, we have, and I, this is a, a learning curve for all of our teachers too, right? The demands increase as we go up the grade levels. And so we know Akadance is measuring risk. And so we can't rest on the laurels like, oh, they made it on Akadance. We're good. No, they made it on Akadance. That means we've got a shot at hanging with your core instruction. So we need that really good core instruction, which is why we've been implementing the keys to literacy training, talking about how we're helping kids access that grade level text across all content areas. Okay. Yes.
So two questions. If I'm reading this correctly, then some of these kids are actually coming back and their assessment has improved over the summer? Am I reading that correctly? Like East Hills went from 38 to 45?
So this was, that's different cohorts. So last year's seventh grade ended at 38. This year's incoming, right, sixth graders. And so, yeah, so it's a different group.
Okay. I was thinking of the elementary school.
Yeah, it's a different, different group of kids.
Okay, perfect. And then back to the elementary school. Do you think that for those buildings that they did have some of that loss, they'll bounce back faster though? With the, the foundation?
Yeah, even from, I, we just had in-service today and over the last few days, talking with some elementary folks, even saying that it wasn't taking as long for like the first graders to reactivate. It was like, once we got them back in the swing, they were picking that up. So we should, we should be seeing that. It was very nice today. We had third through fifth in the auditorium. And I said, how many of you have a class where most of your kids are at or above benchmark? And I saw heads, some heads nodding, which that would not have happened a number of years ago. So that was nice.
So a quick question. I, I don't want to make any excuses for the numbers and they are what they are. And obviously we have a lot of work to do, especially at the middle school level. But how much of this is dependent on a student's motivation to take a test that we're not grading? It's not a take home and sign. Like, do we deal with that, kids that just don't want to do it?
And, and Mr. Amato has had this experience working at Brockle and, and doing that. I mean, you've seen pictures of him scoring.
Because they also have to take three, they have to, like the silent reading passage, you're doing it three times. So you start to see an accurate score go through. I never see a kid not try, they're like, they're really set on, especially from the elementary mindset of how they, we assess their literacy capabilities. When they get to middle school, it's just what we do. So they get right into this is what we do. So you really, I, I don't see many kids say, I, I don't know how to do this. They want the improvement on the back end. Once the data's in front of them, I see that and start to increase their why, like why I have to access more of the
I would, I, I would, to, to add on to Mr. Ramado's point, I would just say that there's power in students knowing the why they're being assessed. And there's power in students knowing what their data is. And when they are empowered in that way and they see how this is connected to their overall learning, there is a different mindset that comes with that. And we have witnessed that at the middle school level, but we've also witnessed that at the elementary school level. I would say our middle school example being Brockle. But when students don't see the connection, that's where they're lacking motivation. And they're like, why am I taking this test? I'm just going to color in, you know, whatever.
Yeah. And so the maze assessment is about 15 minutes, all told. Like it's not, you know, an hour and a half assessment. And then also at the middle school, we have the intervention enrichment block, right? And so they, let's say they did blow it off, they quickly learn like, oh, wait, that got me in intervention. You know, and so there is some benefit of do your best, right? And so we want that.
Yeah, I mean, I get it. The elementary kids are motivated to be pleasers to some extent, but I don't know how much of the middle school is like, all right.
Yeah. And I will tell you, some of the middle school teachers, when we first started doing this, were nervous. Like, oh my gosh, how are they going to feel? And then it got to, oh, the kids can tell you the direction.
They're more like on autopilot.
Yeah. And if it's your way out of that intervention block, I guess there's some motivation there too. Thank you.
Without asking you to like redo how you present all these numbers, is there ever an opportunity to say follow the graduating class of 2025 by school through this?
Yeah.
So that way we can see where they're ending and exactly where they're
I was just tracing, so we currently have Akadance data up to eighth grade. So that's when we started doing it universally. So
But even just so like
But yeah, we can do one. Yeah, we can do one that we've, and we've done that with like K to three. We'll do the cohort intact. We can do that. We don't have it all the way out, but we have it.
Filling up on that, what I was trying to do is just follow the numbers from one slide to the next. Just tell me if I'm wrong in thinking this is logical. End of year of Akadance reading, seventh grade assessment, gate one. End of year, 22, 23 for Brockle. I look at that number and then I scroll forward and I feel, is that the beginning of the year then, 23, 24? So are those the same kids? The same grade level? Right. Did they go from 22 to 18? Thank you.
Which one are we looking at? Brockle?
That is, yeah, okay. As you go from seventh grade and then you advance a year. You're correct. Yes. I just want to express that it's not an intact cohort. So it would not account for students who entered or withdraw. It just is whoever was tested.
Yes. Yes. But if you, we are nearing the end of the reading portion. Okay.
There we go, right to math. So while I was not here at the EOI, I'm now here at the EOI. I'm going to get my acronyms correctly. So this is kind of, I'm, I'm just going to summarize this slide really quickly for everybody. When we're looking at the iXL diagnostic numbers, what they mean, the first digit in the iXL number means the grade level, the current grade level they're performing at. The second digit means where they're at in the year. So 450 means I'm in a fourth grade mid-year. So that's where you're, what you're going to look at that. We use iXL two ways. We use it to pulse the kid at where they're at and develop a personalized plan. The system does that for them to increase or close the gaps of their learning. Or we also use it like Akadance to pulse grade level, where we're at as a whole of grade level. So when we walk through the data, I'm going to tell you where we're at as a whole of grade level, and you're going to focus on grade one. That's your cohort year that, that I want you to pay attention to. So when you go to the next slide, when we talk about skills per week on the independent work, when students are getting their grade level diagnostic, if I'm at 400 and I want to improve my score, if I'm a fourth grader and I start at 400, and when I get to 500, in their independent practice, when they're working on their own personal plan, we're looking at them to do about two skills per week. If they do that, they'll reach 100 points worth of growth, which should get them, along with core instruction, where we want them to go. So if we go all the way to the first slide of data, we get to grade K. So this is a little smaller because I, I'm learning how to do the reports. And the colors, my, my color partner over here, the, the color scheme here is not like the Akadance color scheme. So the first one is BOI, MOI, and EOI from last year. And I'm going to do the same as we progress. What I want you to focus on is the district average one of kindergarteners. Last year, BOI came in at 59%. This year's kindergarteners came in at 74% at or above. That's pretty powerful. 11 out of the 16 schools had a higher EOI than last year. And the district average is a 15% increase. So some of that could be we're falling off of the COVID. Might like out of school timeframe where kids are now back in learning centers. Kids are in formalized daycare routines. They're going through all of that. So you're starting to see them coming back in strong. So then our job is how are we going to maintain that? And how is our curriculum going to merit, like increase that? So that is something that I, that I want you to see. And that is pretty good. And if you look at the, also there, 11 of the 16 schools that are reported above, almost 50% of, 11 of the 16 or 50% are higher. So that's actually pretty good too, when you're looking at that. So let's go to grade one. This is our cohort year. And this is an important grade because what we decide, what we instituted last year was we put in reveal math and we realigned the curriculum. So now we have the same curriculum K to five, which didn't happen before. So what we used to see was like a shift in K1 and 2 had one set of math curriculum, 3, 4, and 5 had another. And then any of us who had parents and BA, our children in BASC, they get to the third grade math slump. And they'd be like, oh my gosh, I don't know what to do. What we're seeing here is when you look at this, this is important because this is going to help the third grade talk. So when you look at the first graders coming in, last year's BOI, they were at 50%. This year, they were at 70%. And 13 out of the 16 schools have a 50% growth. 14 of the 16 schools have a higher EOI than last year. And when we get to the end, I'm going to cohort this data for you so you can see the cohort data. So I'm really proud of, of that work. You're starting to see a solid curriculum framework going through where every teacher syncs kind of like wonders in our, our work in the, in the literacy side, we're replicating that in math. When you look at, at grade two, you're looking at 13 out of the 16 schools have a higher EOI than last year. The district average went from 45% to 60% at or above, which is a really good starting place because then that's going to close that third grade gap and get them on grade level. And it's interesting that you can have a conversation with this, the second grade teachers. And then the third grade teachers, if they lose, it's on you. It's on you now. The kids are coming in ready. So I'm really happy about this one. The district average is 15% increase here. If you go to third grade, 15 out of the 16 schools had a higher starting EOI than last year. They went from 35% to 49% at or above benchmark, which is really powerful there. You go to fourth grade, similar, now you're going to see the gaps are a little bit different here because these students did not have a solid curricular frameworks with, in front of them in K1 and 2. So now we're seeing some of that. So then you're going to see in, in fourth grade, you have 26% to 38%, still higher though. So what we gave them last year is, is working. Like you're starting to see the, the common curricular framework there. And so 14 out of 16 schools had a higher starting EOI and the average was 12% increase. When you go to grade five, 13 out of 16 schools had a higher starting EOI than last year. And the district had an 11% increase in EOI. So I'm, I'm really happy about that too, because again, we were trying to close gaps and make the solid curricular frameworks. So I'm, I'm really proud of the work that our elementary schools are doing and the teachers did last year. And thanks to Dr. Lee Sin for leading that charge. When we get to middle school, for sixth grade, on this side, you can see that four out of the four schools had a higher EOI than last year. The district average was 10% increase. This is another group of students who in fifth grade had a real math sync curriculum. So they're coming up a lot stronger. In seventh grade, three out of the 14 schools had a higher EOI than last year. The average increase was 5%. For eighth grade, only one out of the four schools had a higher, a higher EOI. And there was a negative decrease about 3% there. So we have to check that out. This is my favorite slide.
Mr. Amato, before you move on, can we address middle school and talk a little bit? Can you mention a little bit about what we're doing this school year to talk specifically at the middle level, which is reminiscent of what we did last year, K to five?
Great, great there. We actually were working with the middle school teachers today. So similar to K through five in implementing reveal math and aligning curriculum, we have implemented Desmos math this year and aligned a curriculum, which is a, is a great thing for the teachers because we're keeping the teachers at grade level content. One of the discussions we had today was anytime you deviate, you're, you're maneuvering off of grade level content, stick to the core and stay at grade level content. And then we're syncing all four middle schools to follow the same scope and sequence. So that's what we were working on today. And we're seeing some promising work in the data dashboards of what they're doing. We're seeing common alignment at all four schools. And we're seeing a lot of the teachers using the curricular frameworks and challenging the kids to think conceptually in math, which is also aligning with our assessment and grading work. So I was really proud of the middle school teachers today on that. So hopefully with what is coming from elementary up, we're laying the foundation to keep the, the core strong. So we don't have the loss.
Good question on this.
Go ahead.
Does this also then give a good foundation for the students moving into high school algebra, geometry so that they're all starting at a higher level of basic understanding?
Yes.
Okay. So, so that's the prediction.
Yes, that's the prediction. That is the prediction.
I'm just curious and excited to see how we're going to see that. I'm just curious and excited to see how we're gonna see that.
I, I, I'm curious and excited to see how we're gonna see that, too. So here's the chart that I, that I really like looking at because if you look at the first column, that's B O I last year. And this is interesting because you're gonna see grade K obviously is not on here because they don't have a cohort. So it's their first time taking it. This first grade, you can see them as a cohort group. So this first grade, this first grade, when they were in kindergarten, they came in at thirty-nine percent. At mid-year, they were at seventy-three percent at or above, or I'm sorry, thirty-nine is the number of their IXL score. So they were, they were at thirty-nine. So that was like about half, a quarter of the way in. Then they were at an average seventy-three, so seven month of school. And then they ended, on average, the district ended at most first graders ended at one oh one, which is readiness to first grade, which is great. I mean, that's awesome. They came in with an average of ninety-four. So that means the summer slide was really minimal. So the core held strong. And that's something that I'm, I'm really excited about. The core held strong. So if we can keep that line straight and we can see that line staying that way, then the num, that bar will just keep going higher. And then when they get into middle school and they get into high school, the bar will continue to stay higher. We won't see the loss. So what that's telling us right now is that's on us. So our kids are coming in and then the loss happens on us. It doesn't hap, it happens on our instruction. So the core has to remain strong. So if you see that in second grade, the same phenomena happens. Third, they came in at seventy-eight. They went to one twenty-seven. Yes, one twenty-seven. They, E O I, they were at an average of one sixty-eight. They came in at one sixty-five. So again, you can see that phenomena of it's, the, the summer slide was like almost nonexistent. Same with third, if you look, and this is the cohort. So these are only kids who have an IXL score of last year to this year. Anybody that's new in there is not, they're not in that cohort because they don't have it. That's fascinating. I love cohort groups. So if you're looking at grade, I'm, I'm the color blind issue of me. Grade three, you're seeing that two thirty-nine to two thirty-four. So again, E O I to two, two thirty-nine to two thirty-four, that's great. Grade four, three twelve to three oh eight. And you can see it all the way up. I don't have to read all the numbers, but you can see that they held strong now. So I want to point out that we are starting good, that our core is strong. But it doesn't take away from grade eight, grade seven and grade six are below grade level. That overall number, that's what that means. But if we can keep our work in the lower grades from keeping that increase, so this is our cohort time. You want to watch first grade. We want to see what happens to their story as they go all the way through because they're the ones that we have started to implement the solid curriculum.
I just want to say thank you to Mrs. Harper and Mr. Ramato. And I will say, you know, it's really exciting to see a second year of math data listed. And this is confirmation of the things that we put into place last year. It's working. And it's really great that we have the data to support the good work that our teachers and principals are doing. And I want to also mention that, you know, last year was a little, it was a little nervous. This is a lot of change for them and they already do a lot with reading. It was very much embraced. And they said, thank you. We are so grateful to have a solid program. And we continue, for instance, offering today a little bit of professional development as it relates to math, to elementary teachers. And they're embracing it and they're really appreciating it. I am very excited. You know, we've been doing our reading by grade three work for quite some time. And I'm really, I wish we could fast forward, you know, multiple years into the future to see where our math work is because, I mean, I don't want to project too much, but Bethlehem is, is a leader in literacy. And I'm forecasting the same for math because I think that we can do really great things in math.
Quick question. First, students and guardians, can they see the diagnostic score? How are they, like, are they able to see these cool gains and things like that? Could you give a quick?
Yeah, actually, any teacher has the ability to print out a diagnostic score report and it will generate a parent report and you can just give it to a kid. So if you have a student or, or a child, you can say to the teacher, hey, can I have a diagnostic report? And they'll print it right out for you. Students can log on at home and then they could say, here's where I'm at. It's always live. Then anytime a parent wants one, they can just print it out.
So a student could just log into IXL?
Yep.
And they can see it right there?
They can see it right there.
It's not gonna be a school do per se?
No.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify for any guardians might
No, that's, that's a very good question.
And students are updating their I X score, IXL score on a weekly basis. And so, which is a little different than Akadence, but on a weekly basis, we are benchmarking. It only takes a few minutes. It's not an epic event.
I've been going to a lot of PTA and PTO meetings, parent meetings, and talk about the academic priorities that we discussed in this committee last month. And one of those is grade level work for grade level kids. And I always express it as, it's like a covenant. If you are in a grade, we have a responsibility to give you access to the information that we know and skills that we know that grade level should be able to master, stay on course. When we don't do that, we may make people's lives easier, but we end up with a lower number, we lend less, more needs for intervention and less success in the core. So there's really three reasons why strength in core happens. One, you have a good evidence-based curriculum. And this board has supported the purchase of those and you, and the use of those. That works. Second, you have to have the instructional strategies and the assessments to make sure that we're validating that that curriculum is working. And that's what Rick and Kim talk about when they have Akadence and IXL. And third, and this wasn't mentioned, but it's a key factor. When we have students with special education needs or English language needs, the impulse many times is to remove them from core instruction and give them this amount of work that may make their, their months in school a little bit easier, but then end up being the reason it's nineteen instead of forty-five or fifty. And I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Resnak and Mr. Sanchez because they have really said core work for core kids means all kids. So we're gonna have to make up for some, some previous sins, you know, as far as not giving students access. But I don't think any student or any parent or any teacher is not up for the challenge when they have the right tools, the right expectations, and they can see their success. So I have a hundred percent confidence in this team to be able to do that. It's gonna take a while. Rome wasn't built in a day, but it will be built. And I want to thank them for a good beginning of the, a good, honest, straightforward beginning of the year report.
So we've heard a lot of talk about, you know, the core is strong and all of these practices that have come into place. I'm curious to hear, particularly from you three, some examples of where, of core instruction, what that looks like. You know, shout out some, I mean, we have hundreds, thousands of teachers who are making this happen every day, right? But what are some examples of things that you're seeing? Maybe not, not shout out a person, but like when you've gone or what principals have reported, like this is happening at blah, 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 and it's doing the thing.
One thing that we, principal side, we've been starting vertical PLCs. So that means every level, we've gotten to groups as administrators and every level visits every level. So like you have high school principals coming down to an elementary school and walking into elementary school classrooms and watching core. You have middle school principals doing the same. And we're all co-horted together as a mixed group of administrators going to each level. One of the things we are looking for this year is grade level content, having access to grade level work. And what does that look like? I was, had the luxury before I left Governor Wolf to host my cohort group into the building. Dr. Lee's nationally assisted with that. What we saw when we walked into rooms was teachers teaching at grade level. Teachers using the curricular frameworks, having math instruction in front of them, not deviating from the skills that are there, like, we're gonna put it in front. We're not gonna say, oh, we can't access this because we're not there. We're gonna be there and we're gonna work on it. So you walk in and you see a be curious exercise in reveal math, which invokes the student skill that they're going to, and it's just a blanket be curious statement, like, why do I need sinks for a construction site? Like, what do you do with something like that? And then from there, build a conceptual framework and the kids go through it. As you see them doing that, you're seeing all the teachers making sure that every student has the same access. So it was fascinating for other administrators to see. As when they walked into one room, they started a lesson in math. They walked to the next room and they got the middle of the lesson. They walked to the fourth room and they got the end of the lesson. They're like, by the time I was done, I didn't miss a single lesson. But that's because every kid in that school in all four math classes is getting the same curriculum in front of them. So when we do that, we're building that consistency. So everybody has access. That's what I'm seeing. And I see it in literacy, too.
Yeah. I have a really simple one and you can see it on the Twitterverse or X, whatever we call it, about the number of kindergarten writers that we have that are just showing we're writing in kindergarten. If we think back to eight years ago when we started and they told me, but Kim, they can't read until March because we didn't do all the alphabet yet. And now it's the third week of school and we're writing in kindergarten and they're reading those sentences. And then it goes from there, right? So that we have kids in text at grade level and they're able to find evidence to support the argument that they're making and they are writing about the text and they can have conversations about that. So that's what we're, we're focusing on. Any other questions? Thank you. That was really I guess I need to be on this. It looks like we have covered all of items four point zero one to four point zero three. So we will move on to courtesy of the floor on any item. Seeing none. Open forum, board members?
Executive session following this will go upstairs to allow them to clean up. We have personnel and legal, I believe. Yep.
Anything else? All right. Motion to adjourn.